So, thank you. That was great. I was like, where have you been all our? That was awesome. Thank you. So, welcome to the August 15th Planning Commission meeting. And, does she want to do a roll call?
Commissioner Miranda.
Here.
Commissioner Lee. Commissioner Thorson. Commissioner Strauss. Commissioner Nemirov.
Here.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Berube. Chair Olson.
Here. Thank you. Next is the approval of the meeting agenda. Are there any edits or changes to it? Or a motion to approve?
I move approval of the agenda as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have the approval of the meeting minutes from the July 25th Planning Commission. Any edits to that? Commissioner Lee.
I just wanted to say that I find them very well-written and very comprehensive, so thank you.
Do you want to make a motion with that, too?
I move that we approve the minutes of July 25th, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. So, we have two public hearing meetings tonight. Can I get my reading glasses on? The first is for a variance request for a setback from the south side and front lot line for a second-story addition above a garage at 5601 Tracy Avenue. Chris.
Thank you, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. This is a variance request for an addition to a home at 5601 Tracy Avenue. The subject property is located in the southeast corner of Vernon and Tracy Avenue. The house is a multi-level home. It was built much closer to the south lot line than the north lot line. Here are a number of photographs that the property owner has submitted along with their application. The home currently is a multi-level home with a two-stall garage. What they are planning on doing is adding onto the back of the structure, which does not require any variances. However, they would like to add to the garage, above the garage, at the same setback as the existing sidewall of the garage, and then they would cantilever two feet over towards the street. The entire look of the house will change. The bottom rendering here is what they would like to move towards. It would be a flat roof structure. Very contemporary. Looks completely different than the photographs above of the existing home. So, here are some additional photographs of the home currently. The home next door. The garage currently is a two-car garage, and it does have quite a high ceiling with a very low-pitched roof. Their intent is to continue up above the garage for a second level at the existing south setback. And as you can see from the survey, the setback of the garage is eight feet. When the house was originally built, there was a minimum five-foot setback that was required for a garage, so it did conform at the time that it was constructed. Ordinances have changed over time. The eight-foot setback now is non-conforming because the interior sideyard setback that's currently required is 10 feet. So, for them to put an addition above the garage, they require a two-foot variance. They would also like to bring that second floor forwards to add some relief, add a bit of an overhang towards, for protection on the lower level, but also to break up the front facade. So, here is the proposed survey showing that addition above the garage. They also have a conforming addition towards the back. It's a very large, deep lot. The home is, however, very sited closer to the south lot line than to the north. Understandably so, because it's along Vernon Avenue. This is the grading drainage erosion control plan to mitigate some of the additional square footage that's been added. They are proposing a rain garden. This has been approved and reviewed by the engineering department. It is part of the memo that was included in your packets. This is the floor plan that they're proposing that would go up to that second floor. And here are two elevations showing that south portion of the garage, the existing south elevation with the low-pitched roof, and then the increase in height to add an additional floor above that garage. And then you'll see it from the front version. This is the existing conditions of the home. The area that's grayed out with a darker gradation is the overlap into the setback area. But what you'll notice in the bottom rendition that shows the addition, it's really this piece on the second floor that is the encroachment, because this area is currently existing above that garage. So, it's a small piece of that second floor that's overlapping into that south 10-foot sideyard setback. And then they would like to bring this cantilever, that second floor, two feet forward of the front yard. The homes are relatively lined up, so they don't have any opportunity to bring anything forward of the home currently. They would like to bring that piece forward to break up the building wall. The first series of photographs I showed you did indicate that there's a home that's further down the street that has a similar two-foot cantilever in the front above the home, above the first floor. So, it's not... There are other examples, or there is another example that's similar along the block. So, based on the submission, the primary issue is the proposed variance justified. The practical difficulties that prevent reasonable use from complying with the ordinance requirements. The initial home was built, and it was built in compliance with the current requirements. The five-foot sideyard setback is in compliance. That has since changed, so that the 10-foot setback requirement requires a variance for any alteration to that. The second-floor cantilever is similar to the overhang down the street, which is already on an existing home. The building on top of the existing garage and cantilever two feet towards the street will allow preservation of the existing fireplace, the open floor plan that they currently have, without completely removing the existing non-conforming portions of the house. Are there circumstances that are unique to the property and not common to every similarly-owned property that are not self-created? Again, changes to the ordinance, the sighting of the house, these are all things that were not created by the applicant. And their real goal in remodeling and resurfacing the entire house and putting a new roof on it, and roof... type of roof on it, is to maintain the existing home and not tearing down and rebuilding. And in order for them to work within those parameters, they have to deal with the fact that the home currently does not fit within our current ordinance requirements. Will the variance alter the essential character of the neighborhood? Granting the variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The applicants are hoping that modernizing a 1962 split-level home should enhance the existing structure and the surrounding properties nearby. The recommended action is that you approve the 2.2-foot west front yard setback variance and also the two-foot south sideyard setback variance based on the following conditions: that a survey date stamped July 16, 2018, elevations and building plans dated the same, be conditioned on any approval, and that the entire project would be in compliance with the conditions listed in the environmental engineer's memo. And with that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you, Chris. So, questions for Chris? Commissioner Nemirov? Okay. Commissioner Lee?
Chris, does the city consider this a tear-down, then?
No, absolutely not.
Will there be a construction management plan required?
If there's... no. Because they're not planning on tearing down more than 50% of the exterior wall area, so it is considered a remodel and addition.
Oh, so even the exterior walls are remaining? It's really a re-roofing?
It's a remodel. It would be classified as a remodel.
Yeah. It looks like more than 50% of the walls are going to have to change, though. I mean, with the window openings?
If they do calculate it out, and it is more than 50%, then they would be required to have a construction management plan.
Okay.
My understanding is that they wouldn't need one, but we have had situations where an addition or an alteration has turned into a situation where they've needed one.
Okay. And it appears that it's all within the height, residential roof height limit?
Well within.
Yeah. In fact, it looks like it might be lower than existing, or the same?
No. It's... The addition above the garage is about a foot and three inches or so higher than...
Oh. Okay.
Commissioner Nemirov?
Thanks, Chris. This looks like an attractive project. I have a question about the flooding. And, you know, you touched on it in your presentation, and I think our engineering department does a really good job. But flooding, of course, becomes a concern, and when it happens, people get unhappy with the neighbors. They get unhappy with city government. They get unhappy with the Planning Commission. And I think you or Kerry talk to engineering a little bit more to get to gauge their level of comfort with the mitigating measures being used to prevent additional flooding occurring from this. I mean, how... did you guys get good comfort that this development will not increase, with all the mitigation measures, will not increase the risk of floods to surrounding properties?
Yes. We're very comfortable with it. The proposed stormwater management plan does not propose any drainage to neighboring properties. It goes overland, and then it would eventually go on Vernon towards the lake. However, in a storm event, they... there is a rain garden that is proposed that will control the rate and runoff for any sort of storm event. So, we're very comfortable with that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Chris? Okay, great. Thank you, Chris. So, is the applicant here? Would they like to speak?
Hello. Thank you for taking the time to listen to this. My name's Jonathan Bartley, 5601 Tracy Avenue. I am the homeowner. I'm also a licensed architect. My wife is also a licensed architect. Our goal here is to show that preservation of an existing structure is a viable scenario in Edina. And we really feel that this will be an example that people can look to as an alternative to tearing a house down. To address the question about 50%, we're just building on top of existing walls, so no new walls will be built inside at grade on the setback or within the setback. We've talked to our neighbors. They're in support. We actually have our adjacent neighbors to us at 5605 here to speak on our behalf. Chris has been great to work with. Charlie's been great to work with. And I'm just here to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for the applicant? No? Good. Thank you. Thank you. So, this is a public hearing. And are there any... Chair, come on up.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Alex Giesi, and I'm here with my wife, Aisha. And we are the adjacent neighbors directly to the south at 5605 Tracy Avenue. And I'm just here... I'll just speak briefly. I want to give my unequivocal support to this variance request. The design is very, very thoughtful, efficient. And as applicants stated, you know, it's important to consider remodel options versus tear-downs all the time. I think it's a beautiful design. They're thoughtful, talented architects. And as the neighbors who are most directly impacted by their sideyard, certainly a variance request, we have no issues whatsoever with that request, and we support it 100%. So, I hope you'll support it as well. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to speak? Is there none? Is there a motion to close?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second? Second? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. So, bringing it back to the Planning Commission, are there any other additional comments? Commissioner Bennett?
Yeah. I mean, the issue here, you know, there's... it's a non-conforming property, and they're just kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place there. And I feel... I just commend this whole project and process for being so thorough and thoughtful. We don't quite see this as often, and it's a great example for other people. And especially for the plans being so far along to see actually what the stormwater mitigation techniques and design is going to be. And planting a native species to slow down water, too. I mean, everything about this is going to be an awesome project. So, thank you for doing it here.
Yeah. I just wanted to follow up on that. I would second all of that, and I think the design looks wonderful. I can't wait to see what it looks like when it's completed. I would think that it'd be a great addition to the neighborhood, and I applaud you for not tearing down, but taking what's there and making it better.
Commissioner Nemirov?
I just want to follow in the theme about remodel versus tear-down. I was at a party recently that was a remodel home in Edina that could have been torn down. And one thing that really struck me that I think we... you know, some of these tear-down houses that are being built are beautiful, but this house was reusing character from years ago and had refreshed it as part of the remodel. And that was... and that's something that you really can't get with a completely new house. So, that is an advantage of doing a remodel like this, is that some of the older components have a lot of character than the refreshed when you do an addition like this. So, I think this house would be a nice addition to that neighborhood.
Anyone else, or is there a motion? Or Commissioner Lee?
I agree with what's been said already. I hope that this, in some ways, could be a learning experience for all residents or future residents of Edina. Because, as you know, we're facing that... Properties are being purchased and torn down, and larger homes go on the site. But I think there is a sense that not... The demand for a really large home is waning, and that we probably have a pretty good supply of large homes as it is. So, that means when we have homes that are on smaller lots and like this, we need to know what our alternatives are. So, I hope that this architect couple will possibly get some publicity from this. It'd be great to see the process and learn from it, and also potentially maybe share some of the costs, because I think there's a lot of savings to be had when you do not do a complete tear-down and build from the ground up again and reutilize an existing foundation. As well, some of the things that are being done, again, in the landscaping is pretty innovative. So, I'm hoping that that might kind of set a trend and really be eye-opening for our community. So, thank you for the thoughtfulness here. And I was going to say that this kind of a variance request is, in some ways, a no-brainer when you are already in a condition which is not code. This is probably the one case where... The case where you would grant a variance. So, it makes it much easier when things are approached in that manner.
I move approval of the variance subject to the conditions and findings outlined in the staff memo.
Is there a second? Second? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Our second public hearing is another variance. 1.3-foot sideyard setback variance to the east sideyard setback, and a 6.6-foot side front yard setback variance to the west at 5225 Division Street.
Tonight, the subject property, 5225 Division Street, is approximately 10,286 square feet and is located on the southeast corner of Rutledge Avenue and Division Street. The existing home on the lot is a two-story home, which was built in 1959, and has a side-loaded garage. The lot itself has two front yard setbacks. The required front yard setback to the north is 33.3 feet, and the required setback to the west is 33.7 feet. There is a six-foot sideyard setback to the east and a 25-foot rear yard setback to the south. The applicant is proposing a 1.3-foot sideyard setback variance to the east property line and a 6.6-foot side yard or a front yard setback variance to the west property line for a two-story addition to the existing home. The existing home has non-conforming setbacks on the east and the west property lines. The house currently sits at 27.1 feet on the west side and 4.7 feet to the east property line. The proposed addition is consistent with the setbacks of the existing home, but the addition area will not be located on the same level of the existing first floor. The proposed addition would sit almost three feet higher than the existing first floor. And this would require a variance because the addition is not on the same level as the existing non-conforming first floor. The environmental engineer has reviewed the application and has submitted comments, which were attached in the environmental engineer's memo included in your packet. The stormwater management plan associated with the project does not propose any drainage to neighboring private properties. And all runoff associated with this project will be directed towards Division Street and Rutledge Avenue, which both have the capacity to accept the new runoff. The proposed addition meets all other requirements other than setbacks. It meets all the other required setbacks, including the building height and also building coverage. Tonight, the practical difficulty is caused by the existing location of the home, which, again, was built in 1959. The proposed addition is reasonable on the west side due to the lot having two required front yard setbacks. And the proposed addition is not furthering the non-conforming setback to the west. Staff questions if the proposal is reasonable on the east side. Although the existing house is setback 4.7 feet and is an existing non-conforming setback, staff's position is that the... Staff understands that the applicant's request is to remodel and add on to the home, and that their request is to continue the building wall and the non-conforming setback, and that the intent was to match that existing wall all along the eastern property line. Staff believes that the sidewall articulation requirement of the code would be further met on the east side of the property with the addition being offset 1.3 feet to the west or away from the east property line to meet that six-foot required setback to the east. Tonight, staff's recommendation is to deny the 1.3-foot sideyard setback variance requested the east property line and to approve the 6.6-foot side or front yard setback on the west property line at 5225 Division Street. And I'm here if you have any questions, and I believe the applicant and their designer is also here to answer any questions tonight.
Thanks, Emily. Questions for Emily? Commissioner Lee?
Thank you, Emily. All right. So, the only thing that the staff is saying that they are recommending not... Not be approved is the east side setback. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, it was your sense that this house could be offset back to that actual setback? Since this is a new portion of the house, there's no existing foundation there. They're building completely new. They want to line it up. But if they're building new, you're saying, or staff is saying, then adhere to the current required setback, which is six feet.
Yep. It felt like... Staff felt that it would further meet the sidewall articulation requirements laid out in the code. Right now, it's an existing... This is the existing portion of the house. And then this is the existing two-story... Or this is the proposed two-story addition.
And can you explain a little bit about what the code says about sidewall articulation?
So, the sidewall articulation does include the windows, and it does include the list in the staff report. It also includes overhangs, which the applicant has provided. But staff felt that it further met the sidewall articulation intent by setting the addition back 1.3 feet to meet the six-foot sideyard setback requirement.
So, the purpose...
It further broke up that wall that would then expand, I believe it's around 50 feet.
Okay.
All at the same... are all on one facade.
So, the purpose of that requirement is to avoid excessive long walls that face...
Adjacent property, yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay. Thanks, Emily. So, is the applicant here? Would they like to speak? You don't have to, but... Okay. All right. Okay. Cool. So, it's also a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak? Chair, come on up.
Me?
Yeah. You come up to one of the microphones. Just state your name and address. Thanks.
I'm Karen Cruz, and my mother is Helen Cruz. I'm the power of attorney, and I help my mom a lot. And I grew up in the house, and my mom has lived in the neighboring house. She's 5221 Division Street, so we're the house directly to the east of the proposed addition. And I... this is my first time. But anyway, my folks found that a lot and love the area. They've lived in Edina their whole lives. Mom still lives there. And basically, what they're proposing is... It's just pretty much downgrading my mom's quality of life. That wall that they want to put in, the new wall, will go totally back to our existing garage. We won't see anything out that side. It is so close.[1596.24] It is so close, the home on that side is so close that the previous people that were there, if they opened their windows and smoked, it came in my mom's house. We couldn't even, we could smell what they were cooking for dinner. We could smell the smoke. I mean, that's how close this is to my mom's existing house. And it's just, I mean, we have a problem with shoveling. I mean, everything is just so enclosed. It's like a tunnel in there. They are also proposing to go three feet up. I mean, we're not going to get sun. We're not going to get anything. My mom and dad always enjoyed the outside, hanging clothes outside. They had gardens back there. Their gardens have died because of all the big homes that have gone in. It's just really sad. And I guess another thing is, is we, you know, the house does need some upgrading, and so does our home, but the other side to it is, is we only see two people there. And why they're putting in, my mother calls it a hotel. Such a big home, we just don't understand. We would like to see something more neighborhood-friendly, more neighbor-friendly done to the house instead of a solid wall on the east side. And basically, when we told our mom what was going to happen, she's ninety-six, she said, oh, they had said something about a sun porch, but, you know. And I said, Mom, I want you to see the plan. And I showed her, and her direct words were, are you kidding? This makes me sick. It just makes me want to cry because she's been there ever since the fifties, and she's blocked in. They built a huge home to the back of us. They built one on the east side of us, and now to the west, they want to do another one. And we don't know what it's going to do property-wise. I don't think it's going to help us any, you know? My mom's value of her house to have a solid, basically a solid wall there. So I don't know. We'd like to, an addition maybe, but not what they're proposing. You know, it's just too big, too massive. And I, the other thing is, I think with the park close by and with them wanting different setbacks, too, I think the cards on division are just fast. And mom says that all the time. I don't know what this is going to do with the vision between Rutledge and Division with the park, right kitty corner, but that would be another consideration, I think. I would, I just got the plans. I haven't really been able to look as close to them. But that's what I could tell. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to speak? Okay, is there a motion?
I move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is closed, so bringing it back to the planning commission comments. Commissioner Bennett?
Yeah, looking at this plan, I think it's commendable they're doing an addition versus a full tear-down, you know, keeping aspects of the original house. I live right, you know, pretty near there. We walk by it a lot, so I think doing that's a commendable thing. I also kind of side with staff on the east side where if there's opportunity to stay within the setback, one, that's just better for staying within the setback, and two, I think it adds better articulation to the east side for the current neighbor as well as the new neighbor. Them being on the west side, you know, shouldn't block at least too much of the, you know, the sun that's coming into neighboring properties except during the evening hours. However, I think what, you know, what they're doing is, you know, it's going to be a nice, you know, enhancement and kind of match, unfortunately, the change that's happened all around there, as the other neighbor noted.
Commissioner Strauss?
Yeah, I concur with Commissioner Bennett, and I think the staff recommendation was a good solution. You know, I like, you know, with the denying it on the east side and the west side, there's really no impact with it boarding up against Rutledge, so I do agree with the staff report.
Commissioner Lee, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I think that, obviously, there's a lot of things that we can't do as long as that the applicant is following and staying within the proper setbacks. They do have, I guess, the opportunity to build as far back as they need to. We've seen it's a long skinny parcel, but they could essentially build a long skinny building. Since they're not, I guess that's where we have an opportunity here to kind of weigh in, and I do agree that that east side facade is exceptionally long. The way to handle it, the right way to handle it, would be to break it into a couple components. A good architect would be able to actually make it kind of a stunning feature by designing it in a, possibly even with a different roof pitch or different rhythm, set it to a different rhythm. So I think that's probably an easy one for me as far as to vote to deny for that variance on the east side, and I think that pretty much requires a redesign by the applicant. Hopefully, they'll look at the other aspects of the design and choose to do things a little bit differently as well.
I move approval of the variance to the west side and rejection of the variance request to the east side as outlined in the staff memo, subject to the conditions and findings therein.
Is there a second discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? No? Sorry, thank you. Okay, so the next item we have is community comment. And so this is an opportunity for anyone from the community to bring up a subject that won't be on the agenda tonight. So is there anyone from, who'd like to speak during that? No? So moving on. So we've got the sketch plan. The next is a report and recommendation, so this is a sketch plan. It's not a public hearing for seventy-two hundred and seventy-two fifty France Avenue.
Okay, thank you, Chair and members of the planning commission. This is a site we're all familiar with, as we've had, boy, over the last four or five years, maybe four or five projects approved, some denied, some went through sketch but never advanced. So this evening, we've got a proposal for both the sites, seventy-two hundred France and seventy-two fifty. You may recall, oh, it was about three, four months ago, the seventy-two fifty site was before the planning commission and the city council. The city council denied the request. We do have a provision in our code that says anytime a new application comes in for a project that is, that has been denied, it requires a three-fifths vote of the city council to consider that. So as, when this sketch plan moves forward to the city council for their consideration, they would need to make a finding that the applicant can make an application on a project. There are some differences here with what was proposed before. I'll point out some of those. The most significant difference is it now includes two lots instead of just the one. So with that, yeah, that works better. So again, the site seventy-two hundred France and seventy-two fifty France. Existing on the site, a couple of office buildings with a parking ramp on the seventy-two fifty that's in an extremely poor state of repair. Both properties are zone-planned office district. They're guided in the comprehensive plan for office and residential uses. The maximum density in that OR district is up to thirty units an acre. So what the applicant is proposing, first, we'll take a look at the seventy-two hundred site right here in the foreground. They're proposing a six-to-seven story, one-hundred-and-forty-nine, one-hundred-and-forty, yeah, one-hundred-and-forty-nine-unit apartment. There would be fourteen townhomes along this Woonorf roadway and pedestrian and bike connection that would connect Gallagher to seventy-second. They're also proposing ten for-sale townhomes that would back up, they're going to preserve the existing kind of wooded area, that low spot, as it transitions back into the, there's some duplexes there further to the west. There would also be about thirteen thousand square feet of retail on the first level facing France. So here's another look at the apartments with the retail on the lower level. Again, those for-sale townhomes on the backside. Another rendering. So the applicant will go through in more detail of the building, and they also have one of those 3D shows where they'll move all around the project. So then, moving to the seventy-two fifty site, which is this side, somewhat similar to the project that we reviewed a few months ago with some changes. The proposal there is one-hundred-and-thirty-nine units. There would be ten, or eight rental townhomes that, again, would face that Woonorf on the lower, on the lower side of the west side of the building. There would be sixteen thousand square feet of retail in that main level. Twenty percent of the units within the project, within the two buildings, are proposed for affordable housing at sixty percent of the average or the median income of the Twin Cities, so they would satisfy the affordable housing policy within the project. So similar to other requests that we've seen on the site, they're proposing an access off of France, which we still need to negotiate with the county. They're reluctant to allow that, so that would have to move through their process. And again, that north-south connection from seventy-second to Gallagher, consistent with that western promenade that we're considering as part of the Southdale Vision document. They're suggesting a forty-eight-foot setback to the street that could be adjusted to meet that fifty-foot suggestion, again, in the vision document for the Southdale area. One of the biggest differences with the seventy-two fifty site is this Woonorf area, again, it was just proposed in this area and hopefully to continue to the north, but it was forty feet in the previous proposal, and with this project as proposed, it's ninety-five feet, so quite a substantial increase in that setback. And they've added some green space in that location, too. They've also stepped the building in somewhat. So just some of the differences there. So what would be required with this project is a comprehensive plan amendment in that OR district where we allow just thirty units an acre to sixty-five units per acre. As was talked about at the last, last review of this and based on the direction of the city council at that time, we would just do the comprehensive plan amendment for this site in regard to density, and then we look at the density in the whole of that OR district as part of the greater comprehensive plan. They would also request a rezoning from POD one to planned unit development. And some of the flexibility that they would be requesting there would be for setbacks and height. This is a graphic that shows some of those setbacks, so they would need relief in the front on France, seventy-second, and Gallagher. And then in terms of height, this is a four-story and forty-eight-foot district. They're suggesting six-to-seven stories at a maximum of eighty-six and a half feet. That's at that seven-story portion of the project, and also in regard to FAR. Traffic study would be required, again, looking at both these lots as opposed to just the one previously. We would want the traffic consultant to consider that access off of France and what would it mean if that does or doesn't happen, so impacts on adjacent roadways. We did have AFO McJohnson provide a review, and that was included in your packet. Just, this is a graphic from his, from his review, so just kind of the big picture. He was suggesting on above the, a thirty-foot setback above the fourth floor off of seventy-second to have that step in above four stories. Again, this is some of the principles that we're working with in the vision document. He's suggesting a forty-foot setback on the fifth level above the four stories, and then a thirty-foot setback to Gallagher, again, above the fourth floor. And he's provided some additional comments as well. So with that, I can stop, stop there, answer any questions you may have. And again, the applicant will have a more detailed proposal to show you the development as well.
All right, thank you, Carrie. Commissioner Strauss?
The rezoning, you said only part, the council would approve only part, we're just talking about this seventy-two hundred and seventy-two fifty-
Yeah.
-parcel as opposed to a larger area?
Because of that previous denial on the seventy-two fifty parcel, there's a provision in the code that talks about you need, an applicant for a rezoning needs to wait a year before they make another rezoning request unless the city council grants approval, essentially. It's not granting approval of the project, it's just granting approval for them to make an application for the city to consider this request. So they need to take that action before the applicant can actually submit a formal application. So it's, again, it's not granting approval. This would be as part of the council's sketch plan review. They wouldn't be granting approval of the project, just the right for the applicant to submit an application.
And then as far as the rezoning to PUD, we're just talking about this proposal but not a larger-
Yeah, so the rezoning would be just for, well, it would be for both parcels, seventy-two hundred and seventy-two fifty. The comprehensive plan amendment would allow an increased density just for this site and not the whole of the OR district.
Okay, that's, yes, okay.
Commissioner Thorson?
The comprehensive plan amendment would have to wait until we get our comprehensive plan submitted?
It does not. The Met Council, they previously, I believe what you're referring to, Commissioner Thorson, was the Met Council previously had suggested that they wouldn't consider any comp plan amendments after, I believe it was June thirtieth of this year. They have since increased that to December thirty-first. So as long as we submit this amendment before December thirty-first, they would consider it.
Any other questions for Carrie? Commissioner Lee?
I guess we can ask this of the applicant, too, but Carrie, do you know if that retail on the first floor was, is, does it wrap around the corner on seventy-second Street?
I believe somewhat. I think that might have been a comment that McJohnson had provided to add some activity, but-
Okay, and we would have to consider those issues of entry onto the project site itself off of seventy-second or France or this new street if that were to be approved?
Right.
Okay, and six-to-seven stories because it varies for the different buildings, correct?
It does. The seven-story portion would be right here and here, and six generally in here, and then it kind of steps down to five as you move to the west.
Okay.
Again, I think their 3D model and some of their renderings are going to show a little clearer.
Okay, thanks.
Carrie, what happens if they don't get the permit from Hennepin County? How does the circulation work?
Yeah, so a couple of options. Let's say the county says no to the access here. We could still take the right-of-way as proposed here, and, you know, they build essentially this Woonorf here that just doesn't have an opening to France with the idea that we might be able to obtain that in the future. So that's what we'll have the traffic consultant look at, is what would the ramifications be if essentially all this traffic came off of Gallagher and seventy-second? So a couple of options for the city. Back four years ago, the council actually approved a project for seventy-two hundred, but it was contingent on the county granting that access. They didn't grant that access at that time. They changed their mind, and later, we're going to allow that access. The city council makeup had changed at that time, and we brought the project back to the council, and they denied it. So there's kind of some, been some moving parts with approvals, proposals on the site, and how the county has looked at that right in, right out. So staff will continue our dialogue with the county to see if we can't make that happen.
And just another quick question. So this is the first time I've heard about that three-fifths vote to approve or resubmital. Has that happened recently, or is that?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
The code used, and I don't, we're, I was talking with Chris just earlier on when that changed. It used to talk about the applicant had to make a substantial change to the plans in order to be considered, and now it takes this council vote. We don't recall when that change occurred.
Okay, and do we know what the council uses as their basis?
This will be, this is the first, at least during my time, this is the first time that they've had to take that action.
All right. All right, I think that's all I've got right now. Anyone else have questions for Carrie? Okay, great. Does the applicant want to present?
Yeah, maybe, yeah, maybe Zach can also stuff I can't answer. He can. Okay. So Zach, when I feel you got your own mic. Dean DeVolles, DJR Architecture, five-zero-zero-nine Ridge Road, Edina, Minnesota. We're going to do a bit of a different presentation tonight. I'm going to show some quick references just displaying the project, but the majority is we're going to use a 3D interactive model, so you get all the stepping and interest because of this, because it's sort of hard to describe as just flat plans and flat elevations. So I'm not going to go through the site condition of that because you know all that, so I'm just going to skip that part and really just- just going to skip that part and really just get to the project in its essence. Carrie gave a pretty good description of what's going on, but just a quick, a few highlights on this sheet. Essentially, this evolved following, this document here is basically from the Southdale Plan. And basically, this is really, this section here basically represents our project in a transition. I think even the Southdale Plan used this site as the example with the, what I call the Western Promenade, the old land, and then our building through here. And this is obviously our site plan, which consists of, as Carrie said, ten ownership townhouses, actually have twenty-five rental townhouses that are actually wrapped around the rear side of the project. The retail does extend back here about fifty feet along Seventy-Second. In answering the question, actually goes all the way back to Gallagher and actually engages in the Western Promenade in that corner. It's two buildings, we have seven hundred, basically seven-hundred-sixty-five parking spaces, just to give the quick facts. We're overparked by fifty feet because the idea is we want to have a, a community element of parking that'll help support the bike lane so people can have a park and ride or bike and, park and bike for say, and then additional that would help support the, the Sentinel Lakes that's nearby. You want just answers, this one I use, yeah, just flip through it. So real quick and then I'll get to the deal. This just shows the basic floor plans, townhouses, as you see wrapping around the perimeter here. This is a retail in this area, the ownership townhouse is back here, the Western Promenade, Linear Park, and then this center section here. On your right is a parking plate that's below the building. A hundred percent of the parking is concealed, there is no exposed parking, and then service parking that occurs in the main level. Again, you can see the retail, which is the orange, the townhouses, which are the green, and then the supportive parking and these represent the building lobbies. Next. And then this just shows the floor plans starting from main floor and then working your way up. And it's pretty, basically this helps describe how it works and how it steps as you go up the plans through the project to follow those penthouse units that Carrie was referring to as a seventh floor. So basically, it goes from two to four to five to six and finally just small pieces of seventh story. And then just how it sits within the context of the area. We are preserving all these trees. We're doing our stormwater system around the perimeter of the site so that we can keep this area relatively undisturbed and keep that buffer intact in this area because it's, even though it's all been volunteer trees that have grown up within the old gravel pit, they've become an asset to the site and we tend to maintain that. We may do a little bit of cleaning, but we're going to maintain this buffer as it is. And again, this shows the Western Promenade with the idea that someday it can expand to the south and to the north. So sort of call this piece the first link of the vision. We've had it at the Avenue on France, this would be the second piece or it would be proposed. And then Carrie mentioned France. We do believe the right in and right out is crucial and the project could work without, but I think it's really crucial what the Southdale Area Plan becomes because if we don't fight for these mid-block accesses, we start losing integrity of the vision that's put forth. So that's a big issue, I think, for the future of Edina and something we tend to push very hard with this project to establish this right in, right in and right out with Hennepin County and keep that process going. Next is just views again, and we'll show the three-D, but you get an idea of the Linear Park, the stepping, the townhouses, ownership townhouses and sort of the variety of faces and shapes of the project to really give it an integration and a variety of shapes. And again, this is a view from Seventy-Second and France looking towards the southwest. Project will be a combination of metal, stucco and brick. This is a view of looking along Seventy-Second and the stepping from the townhouses and then to the housing and found the tallest part, the retail being here and then evolving the townhouses along this side and then ownership townhouses in the back. And again, looking down the promenade, which we think is a key feature for two reasons. One, for the bigger urban design aspects of what the Southdale Area Plan can become and two, it starts to create a neighborhood within this project. That it's not just an apartment building within the grid and having the two parcels together has allowed this kind of vision set up, so it starts to create its own civic-like life within it and the idea that hope it grows beyond what you're seeing here to adjoining parcels as they get redeveloped or even if they're developed that it may be incorporated within. And again, this is a view based from Bristol showing the far corner. This is a, barely just get an idea of, you know, the importance of maintaining a natural barrier to sort of give a nice screen of the project and scale to it. And that's it. So now we're going to try the experiment, first time ever. It's like Carrie said, first time ever the city had to take a three-fifth vote. We are going to put up here interactive model and basically walk around this so you can start understanding aspects of the project to go through. And I'm just going to describe it as Zach walks around it. So what you're looking at is the rear side of the property right now with Gallagher at the bottom and I think the cursor points, and this being the Petersons parking lot back here, this being the Woonorf going through Linear Park and this being the forest go. So keep, keep rolling through. And so the idea is that we started a step and, and peel the back. We didn't go to Mick's suggestion of, I think he had forty feet, which you think is too much because if we went forty, we opted to make a wider promenade, which is ninety feet versus sixty feet step, but step in increments of ten to fifteen feet because we want all those steps to be active spaces. The idea that those become decks or actually in this case terraces off the unit as opposed to roofs. So we opted to a different rhythm of stepping so that all those areas you see above the townhouses that you see in sort of the black material, all those are active recreational spaces above it. We've also made this deck a public space so we have variation of heights where the promenade is one and then you can go up to another area that may be higher and it may be closed off just for security, but more variety spaces, more point of interaction. Below, obviously you can see the townhouses that occur and then we can go down to ground level once Zach takes you through the project. But really what's key to this is to really set this pattern. What's fortunate is you, as we went down, you can see how all those property lines meet where the Western Promenade, Promenade is, which gives an opportunity for it to grow from this parcel. And again, you're looking down this element here, townhouses to the right, the building you see to the left, townhouses are the black element you see in the bottom and then the promenade is what you, is continues towards the center. So it just keeps sort of spinning around to get an idea of the nature. So now we're on Seventy-Second looking south at the development. Again, the townhouses in dark color, the retail where you see that brown color, that's where the retail turns the corner in that aspect. And then we are fifty feet from France. I know Carrie said forty-eight, but it's just refined, we, we tend to honor that, so it's just technical. Then this is a view from the corner Seventy-Second and France and the idea of using a variety of inset balconies, another thing that's important, we wanted to get variety in the roof height. Why we incorporated some of those seven-story, which is really just two straight townhouse units, so it didn't occur as a flat continuous parapet across the whole block, but had a lot of movement to it to give variety and scale to the buildings and interests. And so that's why that element was employed to allow that to occur. Again, this is looking down the street in the middle and then just keep working your way around. And again, now we're approaching Gallagher in the, which the seventy-two-fifty block right here and our hope is to have restaurants on the corner. Like I say, we have about thirty thousand square feet retail between the two parcels. And then the retail occurs all the way down Gallagher and actually engages into the, what I call the Western Promenade at its west end. And then this deck on this would be private because that'd be the pool area in that aspect. And again, now we're looking at the promenade at its southern end looking north and it'll just go down it, and the idea is it would be a shared street with, with the thought it'd be a narrow right-of-way with a designated bike lane you see beyond the bollards, pedestrian activity on either side, a roundabout intersection. So the thought is that traffic does not go through there quickly, but is really slow and meant to have this kind of scale and element that really gives it a nice scale. And again, sort of creates a civic park and activity that could occur. You see the townhouses on the right and then the townhouses on the left that have individual entries directly onto the Woonorf. So the idea is that Woonorf is activated by entrances, a bit of retail and then the variety of green spaces and element with it. Those steps on the right access the plaza that's above, that's within the U of the building to give a variety of shapes and spaces within it. And I'll just continue north on the promenade and that gives a good feel of sort of the interior and sort of part of the project. And then if we just go down Seventy-Second to the west, so just look back at it, we could do the same on Gallagher and then these gray shapes you see on the left are the homes on Bristol Court that sit there. And this sort of gives an idea how it scales to a neighborhood and then the buildings in the horizon, that's a sun's, what's it called, sunrise senior and then our townhouse to the right and our project. So I'll stop here just so you've got a feel, but we can take different views from this or if you have questions, go through it to walk through the project. But this is basic approach is that we really want to set up something that gets this promenade started and the thought that eventually it could go to the south and the idea it could go to the north and start to really build a new infrastructure in Edina. You know, we've had Sentinel Lakes has sort of been the centerpiece and now we start to build arms and connections off of it. And the idea that this is a major regional bikeway, this can become a connection to it and our thought of doing the bike and ride within this, that's why we thought of doing extra parking, that this becomes a node and allows these connections to start occurring and growing off of it. So that's our basic approach on the project and what we tend to go with. And as Carrie mentioned, we're under the same deadline we had before with the Met Council and that's why the vote and everything in terms of working this through. So thank you and we stand for questions.
Thank you. So Commissioner Strauss?
Yes, Mr. DeVolus, the materials that, I mean, this presentation has been, has been wonderful, but I was even just going to comment on the printed material made for a very compelling case. I mean, looking at the existing, and that is a very bleak-looking block.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, and...
I call it the commercial slum of Edina, yes.
Yeah, but your, your, just your graphics was, has been as good of a display of, of what you intended. I mean, and this animation is even terrific, but I really got, like I'm on page thirty-nine, I mean, it's sort of the same view and I really get a sense that that one of, could be the most exciting spot in this project. And I'd be curious for those Southdale group members, how that matches up with the projections of the future development of that, that idea of that being a north-south continuance. I think you're, we're creating something that, that could be, you know, as, as important as Sentinel Lakes. I mean, I, I think that's just a, especially that ninety-five feet wide Woonorf and the townhomes. I, you know, the one question is that, you know, the, we never saw a western view of, but that's your property too, where the trees are, so I mean, you control...
The trees, yes, we control this aspect here, this is our property and the property that goes up to here, this is the edge of the Cedars property and then we come that way and then these trees are our property. So the parcels are like basically L-shaped like this in the process. And just two notes, we did have a public meeting, I believe, three days ago in which, you know, some of the council brought Seventy-Second, but there was people very much intrigued with the Greenway, there's few concerns about density. It was only eleven people, so it was a small sampling. And we also presented this as the Petersons. And so they're called, this is a much improvement from the previous scheme. So that's the two outside comments that were received on it, the first neighborhood meeting and our neighbors to the west, the Petersons, which owns Cedars of Edina.
And just one final thing, I mean, the, and the fact that these two seventy-two-hundred and seventy-two-fifty are now part of the project, I think hopefully that's the critical piece that was missing.
That's been accomplished.
Yes.
And that took a bit of work, but it's, it's good.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Commissioner Miranda?
So the, the Woonorf is, is, that's not city property, right? That's not a street, it's not, it's still private property?
It's private property, but as we develop over the city, we hope to develop, you know, public-private partnership easements over it to allow public access through that.
So is there going to be, I know this is very preliminary, but is the thought that there's, you know, a name for this or wayfinding information or how do you know, you know, do you just tell people, oh, go down to the corner and make a right on the Woonorf?
You can name it after myself, which people find. Yeah, I mean, it's just developed and this is where the key, and your question was because how it integrates with the Southdale Plan, because part of the, the Southdale Plan is the development of a new wayfinding system. The reason, and I walked Sentinel Lakes, actually two nights ago, and it was interesting, but the one negative of Sentinel Lakes, it never really reached out into the community. You know, it's a beautiful garden, but isolated behind all the commercial buildings. And so what we hope with this, which is one piece, that we try to extend that idea beyond Sentinel Lakes and have it reach into the neighborhoods and connect to Edina and like say, it's only one piece of the puzzle, but I think it's an important piece because Sentinel Lakes set a nice precedent, but it needs to be built on. And your question on wayfinding is going to be, it'll have to have a name so that people realize that it is a public way. You know, I'm going to throw my name in first as an option and others may be welcome to follow up and agree, but then the other part will be key is that in the Southdale process and the comp plan that people start talking about these connections in public ways, so it starts getting established in people's minds of additional accesses, points, smaller blocks and so forth. So there is an indication point, but, and we will give a name and give it that aspect for the wayfinding, but as I said, I think this is an important piece to really expanding the original vision of Sentinel Lakes, which was established many years ago.
And then the, I mean, as a Woonorf, it seems very wide and on the one hand, that seems great and on the other hand, you know, there's some discussion about place making and stuff that you want something enclosed enough to feel like a place as opposed to like this big, because my fear is that, you know, especially at first, I mean, because the area to the west of there is single family, mostly single-family homes, you know, is, are there going to be enough people to fill this?
And to be truthful, in the day one, it probably be relatively light. It's like any new park or any new vision, it probably will be like, what, what do you hope happens is that maybe someday the Peters may add townhouses to their east side of the parking, you know, it's their property, it would be their option to increase it. And maybe this continues here so that slowly more and more people come and connections made. It's initial step, it will be a little quiet, that's how we wrap some of the commercial back in here and we may consider somebody is to activate it, you know, and eventually right now it may be used by the residents, but we hope that some of the people in the neighborhood use it as an alternate space and grows and that the fact that this is connected to the regional bikeway which runs down Gallagher and we offer that park and ride option helps get it further. But I agree with you, as a first phase, it'll probably be a little bit quiet and as pieces grow into it and connect, our hope is to get more and more active and that this sets a precedent that this continues and grows along the western side of France Avenue.
Okay, and then, yeah, as you say, the, the trail, Nine Mile Creek Trail is, goes right along there on the south side of Gallagher. So is there going to be, so is the idea then that there'd be a big crosswalk there for people to cross?
Correct.
Because it's going to be a huge draw, right? There's going to be, people aren't going to want to go to the corner to go across the street.
And that's where we have to work with traffic as we bring this forward to make this connection and develop this connection so it really works across the street. And I do, as we talked about, is we may even consider potentially, where the city maybe put a, a landscape island within Seventy-Second to want to give it a different signature than Gallagher, which is more of a commercial street, but assists in the idea of making that crossing easier in the future as it comes across. So those are thoughts that have yet to be embedded in the scheme.
Okay, and then one last thing, I, I thought I heard you say that there's also, is, is this, the bike trail separate from this or do bikes just go through the Woonorf?
Really, no, the, the bikes are here now. If you look, if you go back, you see a line of, once you go in, you see a line of bollards along one side. So the idea is that we set up, obviously, the cars, but you'll know the line of bollards that it runs right parallel with it. And you know, so that idea is sort of integrated with the pathway. So it's integrated within it on that, with the pedestrians on either side. So that's a basic thought. It runs parallel to the main road.
Oh, parallel, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hamilton.
There's a section in there that shows in a very schematic way the single-family homes and the townhouses.
The Southdale, yeah, we'll flip to the other set.
There are reasons for referencing that. The question came up, how does this fit with the Southdale Small Area Plan Working Group and what they've been doing? We had a meeting last week. And one of the residents who's attended many of the meetings referenced this particular section and said, if we could have that, we would be exceedingly happy. If that section were ever to happen, that would be exactly what we would want from the residential side of the community. So, and he has been cautious and thoughtful in his participation. But I thought that was a interesting reflection.
Okay, that's nice to hear. Thank you.
Commissioner Lee. I thank you for all the graphics. I just looked at this and, and there's just so much learning involved in here and teaching. So I appreciate that. I know that doesn't come cheap and you're exploring it at the same time we're exploring it. I think conceptually, this is very exciting. I've seen how you've evolved through your different designs and, and really taken in the comments. So for the first time, I, I feel like, boy, you know, if this came before us and it needed a PUD, it's finally feeling like it's PUD justified. Too many of our PUDs have been single buildings. Granted, they have multiple, multiple different uses. But you're, you're attempting to mix townhomes and maybe apartments or condos and retail and three different buildings. So I think just the layout of it is such an exercise on this crazy site with all those issues. So I, I think that you, you've got a great start and concept here. There's just something I wanted, I, I, in some ways, want to see you continue to go with this and refine it more. I'm not crazy about the articulation of it. The design elements, particularly on the France side, seems a little harsh. I think you captured it a little better on the, on the Wunorf side. So I'm not sure what the differences are there, but maybe it's more the massing. It seems more angular on, on the France side. I would agree with Mick's comments that, that the height, it, it seems pronounced. I know you, you showed that angle looking down Seventy Second towards France. It, it seems reasonable, but it, it, it is going to be perceived as being quite high, I think, that corner. So if that corner on Seventy Second and Gallagher could, could come down a little bit, I don't, it's really kind of a Lego exercise to find out where you can capture that space elsewhere. But that, because of the angularity and the way it's right on the corner, it does feel, it feels high.
You're referring to this corner or the back?
The other, the back corner.
Back here, there. Yeah, so maybe, maybe back here, we can play with a little bit adjusting here. Part of the idea is we wanted to really get the density up along France where it wants to be. And part of the idea, the exercise of massing was to really play with varying the drift heights. Because what I was fearful when you're doing a full block development, and if we kept it strictly six stories all the way across and had that datum, it could get deadly. As some, as someone from the community, we said, gee, thank God you didn't do Soviet apartment blocks. I'm glad you were willing to do this kind of variation. So this up and down in here was really critical. I know Mick said, put it back on the roof. But then what I don't want to do is have this six-story datum go all the way across and really make the thing look long, broad and boring. And this was really, and the reason some of the angles is try to get some variety and then erode it towards the west where it goes in community where you start carving out units and steps and terraces and that kind of stuff. So that was the basic intent of this. And we can keep evolving it. And I think about, do you want to play with maybe nip in a little corner here and do the adjustment? But, you know, what was really important is to give enough architectural variety so it appears interesting for the full length. Because some of the toughest assignments is doing buildings on long blocks is to make sure it looks good the whole length and not just one monotonous facade with a little bit of variety. So that's how we took that risk of seven story, which some people may find controversial. I think from a urban visual sense is crucial to make this work and have interest and variety to it.
Yeah, I think you've got a, a, a start. It, it could use just a little more refinement, so I think you're in the right check.
And it will come as we go through.
As far as the width of the Wunorf, I, you know, in some ways, I think that, I understand that it will be the linkage, the north-south linkage. But, but it's probably not a bad thing to have areas that widen out a bit and get identified as a place in people's mind. I live on the east side of France and I think it would be nice to have somewhere to go to without having to cross France. And I can almost see that that might become kind of a community identified place where sometimes you'd have a, maybe like a food truck festival that they'd all kind of line up there and, and it becomes an idea. So one, one thought I had was maybe in the center of that, you really grab onto something. Right now, it's just one long continuous thing, same thing every, everywhere. But maybe, maybe something in the center of it that aligns with sort of your stairway up to that other level. Give it a focus and a reason that, that people, the public, even people who are not part of that, that housing development would want, would, would identify with and would want to come there.
So one idea was starting to develop what you're mentioning. I call this the grand stairs. And I thought, and these are going to spill further as we develop out into the Wunorf to sort of pinch it. The idea that they're open stairs, people could sit on the face west and start to create variety of spaces. So you're, you're beginning to see the development of creating spaces. That's why the idea of this courtyard and the series of grand stairs, that people could sit on, eat lunch, do those kind of things. I like your idea of the food trucks because I think that gives more interest and variety within this. And we did think about, that's one reason for the width, was to allow that kind of occurrence to happen. So we get variety of civic events that occur here that give it more of an address. And then these steps are meant where people get lunch. My good theory is we develop it and find functions to it. What I hope is that more variety will work into it. The food truck alley, I think, is an excellent idea to really give this some interest and thought. Hopefully Kerry will find an ordinance that'll allow it to work as far as the process. But I appreciate that.
So obviously, we're not talking too much about circulation, but I think there would be a lot of concern about any exiting. And you're familiar with that issues, left-hand turn out from your site onto Seventy Second, coming out, yeah, this way. If anyone's using that as an exit to the residential areas would probably be a deal killer. So there's going to be some thought there.
And this is going to be, go back to Edina and traffic. One discussion had, do we build? And, and this, and this goes back to the Southdale area plan discussions. I can just present both sides of the discussion view. Part of the Southdale plan was to encourage connectivity on all streets. Another ideal, which may be a compromise, but what we're dealing with is, do we put a landscape island here to prevent that from occurring? That's going to be some of the issues that are going to have to be worked through between traffic, Kerry and city council. Where do they want to fall? How much perosity through the grid they want to happen? We've expressed that. We think this connection is important as a goal of making these blocks more identifiable. The debate will be is, do we limit this end in terms of excessively? Or it may be just be right, you know, you come down here to right out only and no left down. That may be something that gets worked in. So I've sort of left that open to work through what I call sort of public discussion being, see where people fall on how much they want to make an open grid or they want to limit various aspects of it. So understood.
And just the last comment, I think, really gives some thought to the materials. We want this to feel really timeless, I think. I'm not, not sure this is the right materials or color palette. Even the forms could probably go a little more traditional. I'm thinking what's around it. It isn't quite in the heart of Southdale, which we're kind of rebuilding on the east side. So you have a little more, I'd say, leeway to go with slightly different forms that I think that are, are maybe residents might identify more with. And again, I'm, I'm looking for something that, that really says a sense of timeliness. We don't want to get further down the road and feel like, yeah, that looks like that was put in around that time. Everybody was doing that kind of stuff, so. But it's a great, great start and I think you've got many, many good ideas here. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Brube.
So can you speak a little bit to the parking? All the parking is underground?
All the parking is underground.
And how many cars are you?
Seven hundred, seven hundred and sixty-five.
So what I think about though is all of those cars are going down that Wunorf.
Well, actually, we split the ramp in the two areas. We kept a one entrance here, so they don't go in Wunorf, and one entrance here. With the intent of spreading the entrances out to distribute the crowds as the cars as opposed to opposite each other. So that's why we sort of distributed multiple points to keep those cars scattered within the development as a part of the function.
And then you also said something about a park and ride?
Well, the idea is that we're thinking that, the thought is, as we work through the project that, you know, one, we're on the major Hennepin County regional bus, I mean, bike lane. And two, we're near Centennial Lakes. And the thought is, within this, do we designate, you know, and I can say twenty-five, fifty, fifty spaces that may be supportive for community parking where if someone wants to park and take their bike or park and go to Centennial Lakes, may be an option within the project because as these developments occur, we want to start, starting to create that community asset where if you don't have that element, it'll be more difficult for people to make that mode of transfer, a mode of transportation transition. And, you know, the thought with the site, we somehow want to engage that bike way and build onto it. As those links get finished, the numbers will go up. It'll become more of a critical element. You know, if you look at the Minneapolis Greenway and what that's evolved, this will come as a development. If the development's integrated with it, it'll have more of a purpose. So that's one reason we're thinking of is trying to allow that to occur and allow that mode of transition to happen.
Yeah. I would imagine that also makes it have more of a sense of place. Because it's a beginning and then they stop and have coffee before or after or whatever.
You're, you're reading my mind, so that helps support the retail. And you get retail that has more of a community base to it. That's part of the purpose too.
The, the balance between that many more vehicles and then trying to encourage walking and biking, there's sort of a natural tension there.
And Edina is still at the point where you drive to a point then walk, you know, because they don't have a mass transit system. So we're, and so we'll have, we have walking disso, it's like you drive to Fifty France and then walk the perimeter and walk the streets. We're thinking this, someone in the same model, you have to accommodate the car. You know, some will come from the neighborhood, we hope, much as like people come to Fifty and France or anybody, but a lot of people drive and then walk. And we think this will have somewhat that same type of model. But at least it's a beginning of building a transition to more of a pedestrian environment.
Yeah. Nice.
Well, thank you for the proposal. I, it's going in a, a better direction. I'm glad that both properties are employed here. I feel like the opportunity you have and we have as a community is, you know, exponentially enhanced with what we're seeing here and what we've seen before. I just wanted to comment on, you know, personally, I, I could handle a little more aggressive density along France, but I think this project does a really good job with transitioning based off of different uses, different housing types from the west to the east. And I think, as Commissioner Strauss pointed out, I think your visuals were really good. I, I, I looked at forty-six and forty-seven quite a bit. I think it's one of the few honest and very accurate, you know, looks at what this would look like if you're close to it. And how you blended it into the pictures was better than I've seen on any project. And I think it really gives neighbors a feel of what this would be like as a neighbor. And I think that's very important for the community to understand and feel with projects. And I feel like not a lot of them have done this good of a job at Sketch Plan, let alone what it'll be like when you come for the next piece.
And we, we built it off a GIS database. In the same presentation I'm showing you, we, this is what we presented to the Petersons and also presented to the community meeting. And we'll continue to use that because then we can show people different views in reality and they can look at it in common and give their thoughts. So like I say, this is an experiment, this is a new tool. But I think this really helps describe a project better than what I call static drawings.
Yeah, no, it's really good. And then skipping to page forty-eight, just one comment. I mean, your shadow studies, they, they show the majority of the day people aren't home. So people tend to care about the extreme. So I'd recommend having either in your presentation, if it's a three-dimensional or four, do you kind of walk through to have what it would be like throughout the whole day versus?
We could take it and run it as like a little movie morning till night and then you just see the shadows crawl around.
Yeah, it's important for people to understand if a shadow is partially over their house or blocking their yard, if it's only there for five minutes, you know, versus a few hours. That was it about that part. A couple of specific details. You know, this is a unique project in the fact that it has this Wunorf in the back. It, a lot of these other ones, we focus on what that pedestrian experience is on France. And I feel like it's forgotten on this and, and for a good reason. So I think what you need to think about is, and you probably already have, but what that retail experience is on that east side of this project and how you get people from that retail experience in a, a good way to that Wunorf. Because I doubt people are going to want to linger on France, no matter how nice you make it there, knowing what's on that west side. So if it's through the buildings or between the buildings, how you get people, you know, along, walking along France, there, there probably won't be as many people walking there except to shop. But then if they want to linger, how you, how you make it pretty nice for them to get around the building or through the building.
Yeah. And that's why, you know, we're really emphasizing the Seventy Second connection, the connection in the middle and the Gallagher connection, make sure it's four-sided. And obviously on France, you know, we hope to have a restaurant on Gallagher and France to anchor that car and give active space. So that's going to be some of the balance to work with, how the retail gets positioned, make sure France is not forgotten. And, you know, using the fifty-foot setback and really developing the green boulevard longer is going to be essential to make France work, you know, as part of this puzzle work. But that's why all four sides of this thing, plus why we split it to buildings to allow this connection between the Wunorf and France and Seventy Second and Gallagher. So it's like a ladder that people can traverse and feel comfortable going back and forth between the two. And that's really what we're trying to accomplish with this.
And so I guess most of my other comments are kind of about the Wunorf itself since, you know, it's new to this community and to most people. So I think you have an opportunity to be very creative with how you approach it, how you treat it. And maybe it's usually a certain way somewhere else, but I think you have the opportunity to kind of make it your own here, especially since you're the first link to this whole thing and people connect to it. So a couple of things come to mind, specifically with the uses you have back there of the townhomes. And then you'll have rental apartments of introducing a little more landscaping than what you have. Maybe some stuff that has cover in the winter because there's not retail there now. And whatever retail would be there in the future would probably be more pedestrian focused. So, you know, having some views partially blocked with evergreens and other things- things to just kind of add some.
Okay, I agree with that. And the one thought, and that's our thought, we got the idea and we still have to develop this more richly, but the idea of the food trucks and stuff, I want to sort of combine landscaping, but allow that element of having events within the space, too. So, we're going to try to balance, but I agree with the thought of keeping it green will be essential, especially with the cedars
And just year-round, cedars has a lot of
Yeah.
A lot of, you know, they have green all year, so. And I guess the other thing, just through the walkthrough, you know, the nice thing about Wu-nurf is, you can tell, you can't tell it's super auto-focused, but if you're making your way through there, it's also not as clear for the user of where to go, and because there's so much space, you kind of have opportunities. I think in this circumstance, it'd be helpful to direct people, and one idea comes to mind of, at least for cyclists kind of going through there, having them hug that west side
Okay.
Both directions, just maybe have bollards and, you know, there's an eight-foot path, but then if they're on the west side of that Wu-nurf, there's no cars crossing them to go park, there's no cars crossing them to head east, and there's no
Keeping the bike lane on the west side, so it's contiguous.
Yeah, and so it's protected, not, you don't have to worry about someone pulling out hitting you, and it just
Essentially, yeah, along here. And you could see where we started setting up the bollards right here to start defining that dedicated, but I agree with you, that's what we were thinking, is that the west side would be the clean shot across.
And then the last two things, the stair thing, I think that's always an awesome idea. I think when you walk through it, it's a little confusing, you kind of interrupt the sidewalk with them and have grass, so I'm assuming you'll take care of that, but that'll be a cool feature. And then the last thing is that traffic ring that you have slowing people down, which I think is very critical and nice. It'd be nice because this project has quite a bit of length to maybe have some identifiable spots, like that becomes a taller element, and then maybe on the south corner, you have a more pronounced gathering space for where you want to direct cyclists coming off Nine Mile Creek to kind of just gather at that south end of the Wu-nurf versus on the corner. And I'm sure that's where you're going, but pronouncing some of these nodes on the Wu-nurf for
What's the name of the famous dog on France Avenue? The sculpture?
Spalding.
Spalding. We were going to draw and put Spalding in here to save the idea, because Zach didn't quite get him in there yet, but I agree with you, some element that starts, more elements that make identification.
Yeah, and just that the south end of the Wu-nurf, I think that retail coming across and working with the city or the Three Rivers Park to just have a cross back there, you know, to the Wu-nurf versus waiting until you get to France, because people would just cut right there anyways, seeing all this attraction. So, having some area to gather that's focused on bikes, you know. I know one of the previous proposals, you had kind of stations for people to take care of stuff, but, and I like the idea of having the rental townhomes on the west side of the back of this, just because if the market changes and this becomes a hot ticket and people are using it a lot, to transition those to some sort of retail or
Yeah, and that's the thought that, you know, if it evolves, you know, does this corner and this corner change? We sort of designed it with the ability to evolve, that, you know, why this side distinctly always stay ownership townhouses, the thought that these corners could be something else ten years from now, that would be outstanding, that the project can evolve as the changes occur in the Southdale area, that it's not just static and frozen in time. And so, yeah, I agree with you, that was some of the intent of why we did this, to allow that transition to occur if needed.
I just applaud how well you guys have thought through this stuff. It's very evident through your walkthrough, and you see the beginnings of it in the packet, but walking through and hearing you guys speak, it's reassuring to me as just a citizen that might use this place and would, that all these things have been thought out and very flexible over time.
Thank you.
Did you have anything for it, Jonathan?
Okay. So, again, I like this, too. I think there's, you know, definitely some room for improvement. So, I'm a big fan of what Mick has said in his memo, so I think that if this, you know, you pursue, if you get through the council and you come back, I would like to see you address a lot of his recommendations, because I think they really just make it even a more excellent project and really ties into all the, you know, goals that we've been working hard on. So, that includes kind of lowering the height at the corner at Seventy Second and Gallagher. I think that that does make a sense, and that would really kind of break up what's along France. I look at this and I, you know, I just want to see so much more green space, and I know we've been focusing on the Wu-nurf, and I'll get to that, but France Avenue, I just feel like that's just a lot of, you know, pavement, hard space, and that I just want to see that continuous. I don't know if you can show France on there?
Yeah, we can rotate.
But it looks like it, you know, getting closer to Gallagher, all of a sudden it's just pavement, and it just doesn't seem, one of our goals is to, I think the last one we looked at had like two rows of trees and
And that's, yeah, we show many, we haven't developed this fully, but
Yeah, but, yeah, exactly. So, as you develop that, yeah, just, or just, you know, yeah, you know, just make those spaces more active, but just make it. So, then let's see. With the Wu-nurf, I'm concerned with, and I know we all hope that you'll get that access from France, but I'm really concerned how this would all work if that didn't happen. So, I'm kind of of the mind that it would be, you know, I would consider a condition like what was before, that it wouldn't go through without that. And my reason is, is the focus, you know, kind of looking at page twenty-eight and where you're showing the access to, you know, within the buildings, if you don't have this access from France, it's all going to be on the Wu-nurf, and that's not going to be, that's going to be a main drive, you, seven hundred, you know, parking stalls more, that's all going to be based off of the Wu-nurf, and I just don't see that
Yeah, but we'd end up doing, let's say we can't get this, I may end up shifting the entrance of garage off Gallagher. You know, that's, I'd have to react to what occurs.
Right, you'd have to work on that.
But, you know, the position that we're real firm on, and I think hopefully the planning commission is too, is that in order for the Southdale plan to be successful, these interruptions or mid-block connections off of France are really crucial to change the nature of the street.
No, we totally support it. I'm just saying if it doesn't get through with the county
Hopefully we get stuck, yeah.
I think this just doesn't work as well. I mean, we'll go there, and you got, all of us are like behind you on that, but if that doesn't happen, I just really see too much emphasis on the Wu-nurf, I just, you know, and so. Speaking of the Wu-nurf, again, I would like to see a lot more green space back there. And I know you're going to define it all, and I know on page twenty-nine, you were showing kind of anticipated nodes, and so then you can just kind of further define that and show how that would work. The townhomes, how are those accessed?
So, the way they work is that they're accessed through the garage underneath.
Yeah.
But when you get to the edge of the garage, you'll have garages within the parking ramp, and then there'll be a set of stairs that go down each, so it's more like a typical townhouse, so they're tucked in a garage, except you'll access it through the main garage, so
So, you come off of this, what street do you?
So, you would come off, you know, let's say you come off here, you'll go through, and then below it will be a series of private garages, each with a stair that connects to the townhouses. So, off this edge will be, and we haven't drawn that detail yet
Yeah.
There'll be a series of garages and the steps that connect to each townhouse. So, there'll be access through the garage and then into your individual private garage and entry, auto-entry from there.
There's no access from Seventy Second, it's all underground?
It's all underground, there's pedestrian access, obviously, but no auto-access.
Let's see. I think the phasing, are you thinking about that, how it would work?
It would be built all at once, but it would start at the south end and be built towards the north.
Okay.
But it would be built as a singular project.
Okay. Great, well, that was it for me. Again, just, I'm looking forward to seeing this, you know, develop further and really see how you address, you know, mixed comments, because there's some substantial changes to that, and I think it would really improve it.
And some, I agree with, and some I don't, we'll work through it.
Right, yeah.
So, no, thank you. To your
Commissioner, go. Thanks. I think this is a very attractive project, and thank you for presenting it. I had a question, I had comments, questions about two things. First of all, on the Wu-nurf, I'm just going to throw this out, my, kind of my definition of a Wu-nurf, and I'd like, but it's uninformed, I'd like your feedback. Because I think that when you put in a Wu-nurf, as other commissioners have said, it's new. The way I think of a Wu-nurf is, it's a pedestrian-oriented road that can be used by cars.
Correct.
Okay, so, I think we're going to have some education about that and feeling, and obviously then if it becomes a car-dominated road, then we're, you know, that may provide some safety issues. Just for a second, if you can show your France Avenue view, my understanding last time was that one of the main reasons that the county did not like access off of France is they didn't want people exiting your property mid-block and then zipping across a couple of lanes to get to make a left turn on Gallagher.
Yeah, to do, correct, to do this and try to get over here.
So, what I'm wondering is if we could do something that was more popular, maybe perhaps many years ago, which is perhaps move your property to the west, I don't know, five to fifteen feet, and work with the county to put in some kind of median on that first line, first row of traffic that runs the block, and then move the road over a little bit, so it's a slower road, and it would also would then, because you'd have a median, you could put trees in it, or some kind of decorative
You could literally carve, because we have, you know, would you carve a lane here where you make a right, and it's median, then you pop out down there? Maybe. And I get it, this is where the traffic engineer is going to come in the county, but it's not a thought, because, you know, what they don't want to see is this, obviously. Do you build a, what they call a slip lane, but it has a barrier, so you get far enough here that you can't do this motion across.
With trees.
It's an idea worth considering to see if a traffic engineer would accept the idea. It's worth a try.
And it seems like you could take some of the space out of the Wu-nurf. The Wu-nurf is very generously spaced, so if you took, even if you lost fifteen feet, it's still a nice-sized Wu-nurf. But that's something I, I'd like you to, you know, and I'm sure that you have access to people that have a lot of other ideas like that, too, because I think the more creative ideas you can negotiate with the county to get the, to get the access off France, I do think that's a key to the property. And it seemed like the one thing the last time that really struck with me, besides all the community issues, was the inability to figure out a way to get past that block with the county. Because I do think, I agree with Chair Olson, that that's a real important thing for the success of this project. And I guess I would end by saying that, and I would like to see this project succeed. I think it is, it would be a nice improvement to that block in Edina.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you get enough comments?
Yep, I appreciate you guys' insight. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, so moving on, I'm just going to skip correspondence and petition, because I dropped out, it's had something happen. So, chair and member comments, do we have any member comments? Any announcements? No? Okay.
I'll give a quick one, if that's okay.
Oh, yeah?
The next Fiftieth and France Community Meeting is next Thursday, is it Thursday or Wednesday, actually? I think it's Wednesday, next Wednesday, the twenty-second, at the parks, at the engineering building on seventy-four fifty Metro. We couldn't get a property closer to Fiftieth and France, but we do, in case anyone's watching tonight, you know, we'd like to see it come to the community meeting next Wednesday night, seven o'clock.
Are there any staff comments? Has anything been happening with the council, or?
Motion to adjourn?